Good evening. I am calling the regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Monday, November 16, 2020, to order. We are conducting our meeting remotely in compliance with the Special Open Public Meeting Act rules issued by Governor Inslee's emergency order. City Clerk, can you please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Figueroa.
Excuse.
Councilmember Keel.
Present, Councilmember Keel, present.
Councilmember Protem Lee.
Councilmember Protem Lee, present.
Councilmember McCloskey.
Councilmember McCloskey, present.
Councilmember Fleming.
Councilmember Fleming, here.
Mayor Protem Worthington.
Mayor Protem Worthington, here.
Mayor Belisi.
Mayor Belisi, here.
You have a forum, Mayor.
Okay. May I, I'm, I'm calling for a motion to excuse Councilmember Figueroa.
I move that we excuse Councilmember Figueroa from tonight's meeting.
I have a first and a second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, before we begin our meeting, we have a few special rules I want to go over with everyone. First, participation in public comments and public testimony on the public hearing will be accepted by the following methods. One, written comment or testimonies will continue to be accepted by email. Comments received before 5:30 PM deadline will be electronically provided to City Council for their consideration. Two, subject to technological limitations, the council will also accept telephonic comments or testimony by calling the number listed on the agenda, 1-509-342-7253, conference ID For member, for members of the public who are calling in, please be advised that your call will be taken in the order received. To ensure order, your microphone will be muted until you have been recognized to speak. You will be recognized by the last four digits of your telephone number that you're calling from. At that time, you will be asked to unmute your microphone by pressing star six. Secondly, for City Council members, as a reminder, as with our previous remote meetings, we will continue to use the round robin method in the sequence showing in the speaking and voting chart that has been provided to each of you for, to ensure that everyone at our meeting has an opportunity to speak. With that, may I ask Councilmember Keel to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Great, thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Keel. At this time, may I have a motion to approve our agenda? Council, Mayor Protem Worthington, you're, you are muted.
Yes, I was. So let me try that again. So Mayor Belisi, this is Councilmember, Mayor, our council, this is Mayor Protem Worthington. And I move for the approval of tonight's agenda as distributed.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Keel, I second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are there any objections to approving the agenda as provided? Okay, not seeing any, the approval of the agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. As of this evening, we have received no public comment via email, therefore you have not received any email of such this evening. And I don't believe we have any public on our, on our, on phone at this time. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. I'd like to call for a motion to approve or amend the consent agenda as provided.
And Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Protem Worthington, once again. And this time, I move for the approval of the consent agenda as provided for November 16th.
Okay, I have a first or I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, I second.
Yeah, but first and a second. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as provided? I don't see any. So at this time, hearing none, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. At this time, we are moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is our second public hearing for our proposed 2021, 22 biennial budget. I am going to ask our Finance Director, Leslie Blaisdell, to give us a report out. Ms. Blaisdell, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Leslie Blaisdell, Finance Director. Tonight is our third and final public hearing related to the 2122 proposed biennial budget. Public hearings were also held on October 19th and November 2nd. We've held two councils, we've held three council study sessions on October 5th, the 19th, and November 2nd. And the proposed budget is scheduled for council consideration on December 7th. The budget is a balanced and conservative budget that assumes a continuation of our 2020 levels of service to the community. We continue providing the best service we can, meeting all our contractual, legal, and debt obligations, while exercising prudent cash management and maintaining our strategic reserve. We've been conservative with revenue projections for the biennium due to the still largely unknown and now continued impacts from COVID-19. The projected, the proposed budget includes the statutorily allowed increase in the city's ad valorem property tax in each year of the biennial budget. The expenditure budget is a status quo budget with a modest level of inflation assumed for expenditures. Any changes made to the budget during our previous study sessions will be included in the ordinance and, and figures presented to council for consideration. At this point, the changes that are, that have been made were our adjustments to the alarm permit and false alarm fee revenues, which were adopted by council on October 5th. We will include the reduction to the TBD fee approved by council on November 2nd. We'll include the utility tax that was also approved by council on November 2nd. And we'll restore the TBD funding and pavement maintenance expense budget to the street fund pursuant to the court decision related to I-976. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Blaisdell. This is a public comment on the proposed budget. We have studied it in the past. We have received no public comment as of this moment, and nor do we have any public on our line to provide verbal comments. This is scheduled for adoption on December 7th. So with that, I am going to close the public hearing portion of our agenda this evening. Yeah, I'm assuming, are there any council members that have any clarification questions in regards to the budget at this time? Okay, I don't see any, so we will move on to our council consideration portion of our agenda. The first item up is the 2021 legislative agenda to, to be discussed this evening and hopefully have council consideration on. I'm going to ask our city manager, Steve Sugg, to come on, on camera and provide the staff report on this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have before you the legislative agenda, which we've studied at the previous meeting. Tonight, we have included a couple of the, from the comments, the council had a good discussion at the last meeting. We've included the items, the AWC legislative items within the agenda, within the priorities, starting off with police reform. You'll notice in the agenda, or excuse me, in the resolution that our city attorney has put together, there is, there's eight, excuse me, there's nine bullet points. This comes straight from the AWC's legislative priorities. And that includes legislative leadership in addressing racial equity statewide in all aspects of policing, a statewide standard for the use of force that preserves the right of local jurisdictions to enact more restrictive standards based on community needs, expansion of the grounds for an officer to be decertified to include use of force violations. The fourth item, a bullet item, is requirement that an officer misconduct investigations be completed regardless of an officer's resignation. The next item is establishment of a duty for all officers to immediately intervene and report misconduct by a fellow officer. Next is the increased mental health supports and resources for officers. The next three on the legislative agenda from, from AWC for police reform include additional training for officers, including adequate financial investments from the state. Next is a fully funded basic law enforcement academy to reduce wait times. And finally, police reforms that are not subject to the collective bargaining process. So that is the complete list, and that was on your docket for tonight for, for council consideration. The next three items in the legislative agenda would include those items which we've discussed previously, so I won't go through those, just briefly mention the support for, with relationship to I-976. Although the court declared that invalid, we believe the initiative will not likely be the last voter approved initiative, so we call on the state to come up with sustainable funding revenue options for cities for transportation. And the financial flexibility has to do with the flexibility needed with the real estate excise tax, giving local governments the ability to deploy those revenues where they are needed. And the city-state partnership has to do with the liquor, distribution of liquor revenues and criminal justice assistance funding to, from the state to the cities. And obviously, that is a critical funding source that we, that we count on each year. And we just implore that the state continue maintaining that funding level of not increasing it. And finally, Councilmember Figueroa, at the last meeting, requested an add with respect to a legislative ask for funding to, in relationships to sewers, especially trying to determine how to sewer the unsewered areas of University Place. There are, according to a 2004 study, there's about 1,000 parcels scattered throughout University Place that are not currently on sanitary sewer, they're on septic systems. And they are, it's been a challenge over the last 25 years to figure out how to fund sewers for those areas because it's so expensive for individual property owners to individually take, figure out a way to access public sewers. So what we've included in this legislative ask, and, and again, it's up to the council for, you know, if you, if you want to deploy, or if you want us to add some additional words or modify this, you know, after I present this, then we can open it up for discussion. But what you see there is infrastructure investment. The city seeks legislative support for expanding and/or developing tools and eliminating restrictions on the use of existing revenues. That's a general statement. To fund infrastructure improvements that support economic development. It's consistent with what we've asked the legislature previously. More specifically, the city seeks $150,000 for a study to explore ways in which sewer service can be provided to unsewered areas of University Place. In both commercial and residential areas, we have, we have areas around University Place that do need sewers, and it would support economic development and as well as quality of life. So I'll just stop right there, Mayor, and turn it back to you for council discussion.
Okay. Are there any council comments at this time? Please be aware that this is a, a consideration this evening, and there's an opportunity for, for public comment. So I will go through the, well, let's just raise hands. Denise McCloskey, Councilmember McCloskey, do you have a question for clarification?
Yes, I have a couple of questions in regards to the sewer service study is. I'm, you know, you, you, in this proposal, you, we're also seeking expansion of developed tools and eliminating the restrictions on the use of some of the city revenues. In the past, some of our citizens were against using the city's revenues for the, because these people that were sewored paid for that, you know, quite a few years back. Now it's gotten more expensive, and the majority of the citizens that went on to the sewer doesn't want to have to pay or have the city pay for those, the people that are unsewored. However, we know some of the health reasons why it's beneficial for everyone to be hooked up to the sewer as well. So I like to kind of keep that in mind, that, that's a sensitive topic, the use of city funds for unsewored properties. I do encourage the, the study. I think that is well needed, to study that and see what the best opportunities are. And I don't want the state to come back and say, well, one of the options is to tax our citizens for it. You know, we can kind of shore up and loosen up some things so you can do an additional tax or lid or, or whatever. I'm, I'm not in favor of, of that approach at all, or that recommendation coming back down from, from the state. So I would encourage that being funneled in a little more tightly, so that they don't think that an easy way out is to just loosen up city's funds to, to help us encourage people to transition from, from septic to sewer. We do know, especially along the shoreline, that those sewer hookups are going to be extremely expensive because they have to pump it up the hill. And so in that feasibility study and options, and also working with Pierce County, because it's the Pierce County sewer that is, is a strategic player in, in this as well. So I would like that to kind of be shored up a little bit tighter in regards to that focus when we do that legislative request. That's just this council member's opinion. And the other question I had is, I like the police reform components, and my, my question is in regards to the police reforms that are not subject to the collective bargaining process. We know in the collective bargaining process and the going into contract negotiations, we, we certainly want some of the things in the above bullet points not to be negotiable in, in, in regards to collective bargain, bargaining. So is it those reforms that we're talking about specifically, or, or other ones? Because we know in collective bargaining process, it is a police union that is also protecting the rights of our police officers as well. So I, I'm not sure, you know, it seems like a, a general broad topic, and I'm not sure what that all, all entails, because I, I don't want our, our police to be less protected out on the streets than they are today. So what police reforms would be included that would not be subject to the collective bargaining process? That's my question on that point.
So, so council member, the, the, I don't have an answer to that particular question. It's a good question, but it, again, this was, these are the, these are the points, you know, directly from AWC, their, their committee and study committee came up with these recommendations that ultimately the board approved.
Could we just make it to the following above bullet points? Or is there something more that, that I need to know?
Councilmember Keel may be able to answer your questions as he was on that subcommittee. So, Councilmember Keel.
I'm going to mute, so I can't. Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was on the subcommittee, and as you guys know, I'm a part of the AWC board as well. And you're right, Councilmember McCloskey, the, the lion's share of what that last bullet talks about are the, the things that we listed above, the things that are part of collective bargaining agreement. But we put it in as a, as kind of a, a, I don't want to say catch-all, but as a, as a covering kind of statement, because there may be some, different unions have, local unions have different pieces of what we're talking about above stated in different ways that still would be part of the collective bargaining. And so we wanted to put this statement in to cover those things. At, at no point is anyone wanting, AWC wanting to make our police less safe. I mean, that's, that's just out of the, out of the realm of our thinking. And so that's not the case at all. It is all about making sure that we cover the base to actually, to protect the public and to protect the police officers. My last statement on this for now is, think of it as a way, what we're saying that we really want to shore up good policing. As I always state, that, you know, in every group, there's always one or two people, one or 2% of folks that aren't going to, you know, do the thing, do the right thing. And our police community is no different than, than the rest of, all of the rest of human, humanity. And so what this is really trying to cover is to honor the 99.5% of the police force all over Washington State that always does the right thing, that's in it for the right reason, to protect them and to help them and give them the tools to continue to do what is right. And so for those that half a percent or 1% that doesn't, isn't doing the right thing, we want to make sure that we can give them, the others, the tools to call that out. And not have the union laws, for example, they were convicted of something and it looks like it was going to be convictioned, and so before the, the conviction comes down, they quit and they go someplace else and get hired. And the next city hires them because they've already gone through BLEA, and they don't have to wait, and then they, you know, it's all, you know, like nothing ever happened. And then they do it again at that next place. So it's high time to stop that, and that's what we're talking about.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, I didn't see any. I know we did not receive any public comment on this, even though it is open for public comment. There were no emails, and we have no public on our meeting this evening. So the next item is, may I have a motion for council consideration, so we can have further discussion?
Yes, Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Protem Worthington, and I move for the approval of the 2021 legislative agenda.
Okay, I have a first or I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. So at this time, it is open for council consideration. Are there any council members that have any comments to make on these issues? I will use our seating chart in this case, because I'm seeing that we have a number of council members that are wanting to speak. Councilmember Keel, do you have any comments regarding this item?
Yeah, my, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Keel, my only comment is, I, I want to thank staff for the very quick pivot that you took based on our last conversation for this item. I certainly do appreciate that, and I also want to thank my fellow council members for indulging me along the way here. I'm excited about our, our offerings as far as our legislative priorities. I think they are, well, a lot of them are in line with what AWC. We're going to get a lot of, I think, push for the, the top four things on our, on our list here, just because they're, they're part and parcel of what AWC is about. And I can tell you that most, if not all, of the 281 cities and towns in the state of Washington are, are going to be about the same thing that we have here. So, so we should get a lot of attention. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Protem Lee, do you have any comments regarding this?
Councilmember Protem Lee, I have a short comment. I understand how policing is a hot button item currently. However, I would like to have seen some, at least mention, some of the money-driven programs that I think are experiencing throughout the state, homelessness, mental health, drug and alcohol abuse, and childcare. However, I think that, that the AWC has come, come through with a, with a good agenda, and that certainly each of the cities will benefit by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCloskey, any comments?
Well, I hadn't my comments on prior to this, and I'm just interested in knowing if there's any other fellow council members that would like to shore up the sewer component of our, our request on our legislative agenda to, to preclude not by loosening up the, the funds by raising taxes to, to our citizens, you know, look for alternative ways. I'm more interested in the 150K for the research and the study, and, and also some more creative approaches to helping and assisting those that are on septic, to encourage them more, not through punitive ways, but to encourage them kindly to hook up to, to, to their sewer. And what, and what are the barriers to that? I think that study should provide that for us in the different sectors that are currently unsewored right now.
Okay. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lee, I think, hit, hit the nail on the head in terms of what are the, what should be the priorities of our communities and state. And while I also applaud the focus on, on law enforcement and policing, I, I don't think we should ever turn a blind eye on the other social needs that we have in our community, especially on the homelessness, which is growing and steadily growing in University Place. You know, to Councilmember McCloskey's point, the sewer issue is a hot button, has always been a hot button, will always be a hot button for our community for the very reasons you pointed out. When you look at the shoreline and the southern portion of University Place, we paid already for a study that confirmed those two particular areas are cost prohibitive to move, to move those homes on, onto sewer. The county, when they wore that hat, always pushed for the LID formation. Why we weren't able to do that, put those homes down on, start drive onto sewers was because it was being driven to force that community to create the LIDs. Again, when you do that, it's, it's cost prohibitive, so it, it didn't happen. You know, I think it's important to keep in mind that this is a request of the legislature. There's no guarantee they're going to sign off on it in the end, especially if you listen to the governor yesterday who spoke that we've got some multimillion dollar challenges ahead in the state, and he's looking for money to fund those priorities that are related to COVID. I think a lot of these other initiatives will probably take a backseat at least this year until we're through the COVID crisis. But nonetheless, I, you know, I applaud the efforts that we as a city and community are putting forward on these initiatives. You know, if the legislature feels like spending the money to let us repeat a study, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained, it gives us some updated information. But it would be highly, highly, I guess, if we started getting guidance from the legislature to loosen up our, our rules to, to tax the, the citizens harder than what we've already done. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mayor Protem Worthington, do you have any comments in regards to this?
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. Yes, I have a few. Mayor Protem Worthington, and so first off.
Sir.
Oh, sorry, what?
You turned your camera off, sir.
My camera shows me is on.
You are now.
Okay. All righty. And let's see, I think it's important and valuable for us to be able to partner with the AWC, Association of Washington Cities, on these legislative programs. And while we haven't adopted all of their lists, this is a significant piece of, and I think really the things that can relate well to our community, to University Place. I appreciate AWC's stepping up on helping us focus on the issues associated with social justice that can perhaps get some support in the legislature. Certainly, it's had lots of attention and much of it is way overdue. As someone who at one point provided some supervision for law enforcement, these, I can, I can understand how this would be some important reforms for, for us. The issue of the sewer is a good one to have, have us work on. And while our attention so far this evening has been thinking of it as residential, in fact, it may also and should be thought of as commercial as well. If we want to have a development that matches our goals in our planned areas, as we've been working bravely on, if we want to be able to see that what, what's available, at least some of what's available in the form-based code revisions, we need to be able to have sewered for those things to come about. And that, that isn't necessarily searing, certainly if there's a way economically to resewer septic systems, or if there's mass failures and some things make sense as to how to deal with those, yes. But a good portion of this may also be more about what the future is for some of our unsued commercial areas and being able to move those forward. So those are a few of my, my thoughts, and I think it's a good list. I look forward to helping where I can with that list as well. And if, as I think Councilmember Fleming had said, nothing ventured, nothing gained, but we need to get out there and work with this. Oh, and one other thing, too, we may find some of these items, particularly with regards to doing some sewer study and work, might be better placed as a federal agenda as opposed to a state agenda. And while we haven't worked often in that area, this could be one that could fit there. So, and depending upon what the issues of importance are for the day for our federal legislators as well. So those are my, my thoughts right now and look forward to taking action on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember McCloskey, I'm in, I'm in your ball court when it comes to the, to taxing our citizens for the, for the sewers. But I do think we, it doesn't hurt us, even though the chances of getting $150,000 funding during our COVID crisis is probably next to nil, it doesn't hurt to begin the discussion because if we do advance onto the federal level, which I think we, is where the sewer topic should be had with Pierce County and our federal legislators, getting our local, our state legislators on board with this issue would, would help in that discussion. So I'm all for bringing it forward to the, to our legislator, legislators during this next crisis to begin the, to begin the discussion and the, the work that needs to be done. It's not something that's going to, going to take place, I think, this legislative session, but at least it's an item that will remind us to continually bring that up as a topic of importance and use our state legislators to, to advance the cause forward. But I would not be in agreement should the state legislature decide to change regulations that would make it easier for us to turn around and tax citizens to get this implemented. I think there are creative ways that we can work with the county and with the federal government to get this work, work done moving forward. So I say let's push it forward as, as submitted. And I am looking forward to the discussion on this social justice aspect. And I want to thank Councilmember Keel for continuing to put this in front of us as a topic and, and ensuring that we did uphold our earlier ordinance or resolution that we had done and reminding us that we need to continue action on this. This is the beginning of a long, long journey, hopefully not that long. Hopefully, we will get some traction on it this legislative session and continue to move, move advancements forward. So thank you again, Councilmember Keel. So are there any other comments or questions in regards to this before I call for roll call vote? Okay, I don't see any hand raised. City Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote on this item?
I'm, nobody's hearing you. You are muted, ma'am.
Sorry, ma'am. Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, aye.
Councilmember Protem Lee?
Councilmember Protem Lee, aye.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Councilmember McCloskey, aye.
Councilmember Protem Worthington?
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Worthington, aye.
Oh, why did I do that? Mayor Belisi, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
Did you? I, Mayor, Mayor says aye, did you get Councilmember Fleming?
I was going to do point of order, Madam Mayor, I got excluded.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fleming, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
There's something in the water tonight.
I made a note of that. Councilmember Fleming, aye.
The motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're having an evening tonight, let me tell you. Okay, we're on to our next item, which is the CARES Act Relief Fund Program update in consideration. With that, I'm going to ask our attorney, Matt Kaser, to come forward on screen to, to do the staff report for this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Matt Kaser, city attorney. Before you tonight is a request for legislative update on a component of the CARES Act package that council approved several weeks ago. To kind of go back just a second, refresh your recollection, back in April, your first meeting in April, the council approved nearly half a million dollars of new CARES Act monies. It specifically set aside 300,000 of that for business relief. We subsequently opened up a second round, and that was for the second round of business relief program. Subsequently, those applications were opened up. And we are poised to disperse approximately $338,000 of additional business relief to 56 businesses that applied for the second round of funding. That's not all the businesses that applied, some were disqualified due to their non-compliance with certain eligibility criteria. But of those 58, 22 of them have not received funds from the earlier round that we did in the summer. 32 of those businesses will be receiving additional funding, which checks to be dispersed both on this Friday as well as next week. The legislation that's in front of you tonight is to fix something associated with that other legislation. When council approved this back in October, it capped that amount at 300,000 and set aside additional funds for, for human services funds together with other city expenses. In going through the numbers, it does appear that there is additional movement, if you will, for council to make full awards to those applicants that qualified on the second round of funding. This legislation tonight is intended to do that. One other, just brief housekeeping point that the city clerk advised me of before the meeting, there is some extraneous material that made its way into the packet in Exhibit B that was in there by mistake, that's my mistake, when I tried recycling the, the resolution from last week. So you can disregard that Exhibit B that made its way in there. But the legislation in front of you tonight is to allow full funding for those businesses that did meet the eligibility requirements for the second round of funding. With that, I'm happy to field questions from the council.
Okay, it is open for council clarification questions only, this is a public or council consideration. So Councilmember Keel, do you have any clarification questions at this time?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Matt, could you, I, I think I understand the, the delta and the numbers, you know, where you said that there was some more movement for us, but can you, can you hum that again just a little slower for me to?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm trying not to steal some of the thunder for later on in tonight's agenda. Previously capped it, you previously capped round two funding at $300,000. Of qualified applicants, if we were in a position to make full awards to all qualified applicants, there's a delta in there of about 38,000 that, that we need to be, if council chooses to meet it. Otherwise, those businesses that received funding in round one would have their money in this round prorata reduced so that the total amount could come in under, or at the $300,000 mark.
Okay, so the delta is 38,000?
The delta to meet is 38 for full funding on round two.
Got you, okay, thank you, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Protem Lee, do you have any clarifying questions?
Councilmember Protem Lee, I have no questions, thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey, any questions?
Councilmember McCloskey has no questions, thank you.
Councilmember Fleming, do you have any questions?
Councilmember Fleming has no questions, thank you.
Mayor Protem Worthington, any clarifying questions?
And Mayor Protem Worthington has no questions on this.
Excellent, I have no questions either, thank you for your staff report. So at this time, I, there would have been no public comments received on this portion of our agenda, nor are there any members of the public present at our meeting this evening. So I will go to council consideration. May I have a motion to approve the item for consideration?
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Protem Worthington, and I move approval of the CARES Act Relief Funds Program on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, but first, do I have a second?
Councilmember, Councilmember Keel, a second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, at this time we can have discussion. I will go through the round robin again. Councilmember Keel, any comments at this time?
My only comment, Mayor, is I'm, again, excited for the, the help for the businesses, let's get the money in their hands so that we can help them to continue to provide services for citizens. Thank you.
Councilmember Protem Lee?
Councilmember Protem Lee, I too just want to thank the staff for their getting the CARES money quickly, efficiently into the hands of the people that, that most need it. Thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey, any comments?
Councilmember McCloskey, my only comment is kudos and gratitude to the staff for implementing and putting this together so quickly. And I hope the businesses will, will certainly use it to, for sustainability. And so I'm excited that we have that additional opportunity and funding to do so. So that's pretty awesome.
Councilmember Fleming, any comments at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I too echo the sentiments of the rest of the council with regards to our gratitude to the staff for a quick turnaround as we get into round three of COVID. I think we're going to see more citizens, more businesses in our communities that are going to be in dire straits. And the thing that will keep those folks' hopes alive and keep people moving forward is going to be the relief funding that's coming in, and I'm glad we're moving it expeditiously out to those that need it. So thank you all.
Mayor Protem Worthington, comments at this time?
Mayor Protem Worthington, yes, just briefly, and really, everyone has said it, and my, my gratitude to the staff for getting this out to our citizens and our businesses so that we can put it, or they can put it, excuse me, to good use and do it as quickly as possible. And I think they have done that, appreciate that.
I will just echo the sentiments of my other council members and, and thank staff and, and wish that we have more funding opportunities for our businesses and our citizens, given that, that this COVID crisis is continuing and will continue into the foreseeable future to have impacts both on our business and our, and our citizens. But I appreciate the, the fast way that our staff was able to react to this and get the, get this out to our, our business community and to have an additional round for our, for our residents and, and their rental assistance. So thank you very much. So with that, I will ask our city clerk to do the roll call vote on this legislation.
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, aye.
Councilmember Protem Lee?
Councilmember Protem Lee, aye.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Councilmember McCloskey, aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming, aye.
Mayor Protem Worthington?
Mayor Protem Worthington, aye.
Mayor Belisi?
Mayor Belisi, aye.
The motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, on to our next item on the agenda, the Larson Lane Phase Two Project Bid Award. I'm going to ask that our city engineer, Jack Eklund, make himself available.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, oops, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Jack Eklund, Director of Engineering, and tonight I'm bringing to you for consideration the bid award for the Larson Lane Phase Two Project. The bid opening for this project was held on November 12th. We received 15 bids for the project, and those bids are all noted in your council packet. The bids were evaluated and Strickland and Sons Excavating provided the lowest responsive responsible bid in the amount of $705,966.00. This project is funded through a combination of traffic impact fees and LRF funding, and the provided bid is within the budgeted amount. With that, I recommend the award of this contract to Strickland and Sons Excavating and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, at this time, this is up for council consideration, so I am asking if there are any questions for clarification at this time. Councilmember Keel, any clarification questions?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Keel. So Jack, thank you to you and your staff for turning this around as quickly as possible. I, I had a little side bet of like, is it going to make it, is it going to make it? And I was like, yeah, I think it is, so, so no, great, great work to your staff, first of all. The question I have for clarity is you gave us a presentation that talked about the, the inner workings of what, who owns different pieces of property and who has to have right of way to, to do the building and walk and, and then some, some things are going to be parking, some is not. So in, in this bid, did the, the, I know the answer to the question, but I just want to hear you say it. I, I think I know the answer, I want to hear you say it. Did, did they, are they open to that process and that back and forth? Are they bought into it? Have they, are they aware of it? Are they going to have the equipment and the people and timing the staff to make all that inner working with the people that are on site and all that stuff there?
Yeah, and I, I've talked to the project manager and we discussed sequencing and timing of the project works out quite well for them. They're just, they just wrapped up one project and they're, another one of their project ends this week. And so they're have their, basically their entire company's resources available for this project, which is nice. And yeah, they understand the requirement to build the parking lot first, make sure that we're maintaining access for the business and before we can impact, you know, that back road. And so they're, yeah, they're on board, it's, they, they're quite excited for the project.
Okay, great, thank you.
One thing I do want to add, since you mentioned, you know, the, the different, the different pieces of this where we had, and if you guys recall, we did have the, so we had the development agreement in which we did the, the right-of-way swap for some of the property we owned and some easements needed from the adjacent property owner. And then I mentioned in that last time we discussed this, that we will be coming back with one, one last piece of follow-up action item. And that's basic, that's the final dedication of the city-owned properties that are, that are associated with the roadway. That, that's going to be coming back to you guys sometime between now and, well, when, before we open the road. But it's all, we have all the other easements executed that we had, had talked about, it's just make converting the city-owned property as formal right-of-way. But that probably would be, I assume, a consent item in some future item, agenda.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Protem Lee, any clarifying questions?
Councilmember Protem Lee, I have no questions, thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey, any questions at this time?
I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fleming, any questions at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a quick one, Jack, I may have missed. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick one, Jack, I may have missed this in the documents or in the briefing that I got earlier, but what's the estimated or projected start date and completion date of the project?
They are projecting starting, well, they would like to start probably within the next couple of weeks. They're anxious to get going, so it'll be as quickly as we can get the contract executed. And it might take a little while with their bonding company. I don't know with, you know, COVID restrictions, are there things that slow that down? But their goal would be to get started probably shortly after Thanksgiving. And then they do have, the only lead item on this project are some of the storm drainage components. There's like some filter vaults and such things. And those are, have about a six-week lead time. But they have, but that wouldn't need to be installed until, they could build the full parking lot, that side, that first stage of the work, and also get started on the roadway as well as the street lighting. And so they would envision seeing those. He had already pre-ordered those, so he's expecting maybe get those hopefully just before kind of Christmas, which would line up pretty well with timing on what the rest of the project would be. So he's anticipating, and granted, this time of year, it's always a bit of an adventure with the weather, but he would be anticipating probably being done in about three months total, probably. But it's, give or take with weather-wise.
Okay. And I know, isn't it lane asphalt? You gotta, it's gotta be 40 degrees or warmer to lay that in no rain?
Yeah, it is helpful that we are, we are, any of the existing asphalt we're pulverizing. And so you're actually laying it on basically rock. It's the, so if we had to overlay, it's even more restrictive. But yeah, your temperature quotation is correct, the 40, 40 and rising. So that's, but we should be able to, we hit that. Every now and then, we'll be able to sneak those in in the winter. In fact, it seems like we've been paving more than, more than, more than not this time of year, it seems.
All right, well, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, any questions at this time?
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington has no questions. Thank you.
Okay, I also have no questions. This is open for public comment, and again, we received no public comment via email regarding this project, nor do we have any community members on our team's meeting this evening. So with that, I am going to ask for a motion for council consideration.
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, and I move that the Larson Lane Phase Two Project Bid Award be awarded.
Yeah, but first, do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Okay, so at this time, it is up for council discussion. Councilmember Keel, any comments at this time?
It's about time. I'm very happy. Thank you.
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, any comments at this time?
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey, any comments?
I'll echo Councilmember Keel. I'm very happy to. It'll be a relief for traffic and a long time coming. So kudos to the engineering staff for putting this together and making it feasible.
Councilmember Fleming, any comments?
Councilmember Fleming has no comments. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, any comments?
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington is looking forward to the project's starting completion, but otherwise, all done. Thank you.
Yep, I'm excited too, and hopefully the weather holds out for us so we can get it done within the three-month time limit and don't end up with extensions. So with that, city clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, aye.
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee?
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, aye.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Councilmember McCloskey, aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming, aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington?
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, aye.
Mayor Belisi?
Mayor Belisi, aye.
The motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eklund.
Thank you.
At this time, we are on to city manager and council comments and report outs. Mr. Sugg, may we have your manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, yes, tonight, you, earlier this evening, you heard from city attorney Matt Kaser about the resolution which you approved that allowed for an adjustment to the coronavirus relief fund distribution. This is one of several resolutions that the council has adopted since July that has kept up with the appropriation and distribution of funds so that we can get these to the businesses and the residents in need that are being mostly affected by the coronavirus. I'm pleased to report that we are closing in on the end of the distribution of those funds. We should have those all completed and distributed prior to the deadline of November 30th. And by the end of this, we'll have distributed $684,000 to businesses and a little bit over $232,000 for social services, for human services. That's rent relief, childcare utilities. So many families, many businesses have been helped by this. There's, you know, we're not through the woods yet, as Councilmember Fleming mentioned earlier. We're into a surge in COVID, as we've all been hearing on the news. And it's, we're into this, we're into the season where we need to be more careful. But I'm pleased to report, now, due to the council's legislation, we've been able to distribute a substantial amount of funds to businesses and residents. And just one other piece of good news, as we approach the holiday, with this CARES funding, we've been, we're going to be distributing $9,000 for Thanksgiving dinners for needy families through a partnership with Arichurch. The meals will be delivered with addresses provided by multiple university-placed schools to families that can't afford to have a meal on Thanksgiving. The meals will serve four to six people. We're talking complete meals, turkey, stuffing, vegetable sides, potatoes, rolls in a pie. I mean, a complete meal, so for each family. Those will be distributed on Saturday, November 21st, and we thank very much the partnership with Arichurch. And that will be a welcome thing for those families that essentially can't afford to have a meal on Thanksgiving. So that's another way that the CARES funding that you provided has been able to be used productively and in a meaningful way in the community. Again, we expect to award all of the grants by the end of November 30th, and we thank council for your prompt action, beginning with that first round in July and then the second round in October. So thank you very much, council, and the staff really appreciates it. It's made our job a lot easier, knowing that, you know, you supported the program we presented to you, and I'm proud of the team that has delivered on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sugg. Councilmember Keel, do you have any report outs at this time?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Keel. Yes, I have quite a few this time. Make up for those two times I had nothing. The first thing I want to just talk about, I had some discussions with our, with a few of our legislative representatives, newly elected ones, as well as other legislators from other districts across the state. And basically, in my role as AWC, as also, and also Sound Transit, just having discussions with them, what to expect this legislative session. And to the person, I heard three things that they're going to be focused on this year. And I'm glad for the conversation we had earlier tonight about knowing that they're probably going to be limited, and they are going to be limited. I heard three things, the overall budget, because there are four something billion dollars in the hole. They're going to focus on that. They're going to focus on COVID, and they're going to focus on police reform. Those are the three. And if there's anything else that is not within those three, the legislators I spoke to said that they've been told by their different caucuses not to even bother bringing them up just because they're going to be, you know, everything remotely and just not going to have, it's just not the same flow, it's not going to be there. So there's that. And with Sound Transit, what Sound Transit is going through now is we're going to be focused on obviously building our budget for next year. But there's, there is really trying to reposition ourselves for the impacts of COVID. And we're going through what we're calling a realignment process. And basically, what that means in a nutshell is that we've got all these projects, these projects of billions of dollars that were voted into ST3 that voters want, and we're going to build them. But because of the impact of COVID, we may not be able to keep all of those things on their original schedules for building, because of just the cash flow. And so now the board is working with ST staff and the community to think through how a realignment process might look, given the impact. At the same time, though, we're also working with state legislators, as well as our federal people too as well, to hopefully shake out some additional dollars. We anticipate with President-elect Biden that there's probably going to be, and he's already said, we expect that there's going to be a big focus on infrastructure and, you know, building up the economy again. So we just think that there's going to be a lot of opportunity there for some funding. How easy it's going to be, we don't know. I think the senatorial races in Georgia is going to depict how easy or how hard things are going to be in the future. So we're still waiting on that. In Pierce Transit, again, we're working on the budget with Pierce Transit as well. I think in most cases, there's not any big, you know, shakeouts, you know. COVID, we understand that, but in the case of Pierce Transit, our ridership there is stronger than in other transit agencies just because we're in Pierce County. There are more people in Pierce County that rely on public transportation. And we don't know why that is, other than maybe the type of work that we do or the types of incomes that we have. You know, there's, those, the ridership is backed stronger. So we're back to, I think, almost 80% of our ridership that we had before COVID, which is, which is quite higher than most people. So we're still dealing with the budget. We, as you guys may recall, we had a reconstitution of the board makeup this last few months. Where, and thank you for that, you guys elected me to the board, but we are now sharing our seat with Furquess. And so they just did all that realignment. So now we have Councilmember Christina Walker from the city of Tacoma. She was added because Tacoma got an additional seat. That's why we had to give her one. So she's been seated. And then for our smaller towns and cities, we have a new member, Mayor Kim Roscoe from Fifth. She now is on our Sound Transit, Pierce Transit. She's on Sound Transit Board too, but she's now also on Pierce Transit. So that's what's going on with them. And with, lastly, with AWC, and I apologize, but I need to get all this in. With AWC, we're going through the budget process there as well. You guys, we've talked a lot about the legislative priorities that we have. The thought in going into 2021 for AWC, we have a budget that is that's strong. And we've got a lot of things that are around our income and our revenue and stuff like that. That's been very strong. AWC has been very prudent with the dollars, so much so that we're considering, you know, in our retro program, and I think, if we're in retro, and I think we are in the retro program, there is a, like a $2 million, over $2 million worth of, for the year 2017, money that's coming back. And the executive board just past week just elected to give all those dollars, that whole $2 million, back to the folks in retro. So that's going to be really good news. So, and on average, I think that's about like $46,000 or something to everybody's in there. It depends on your size and how much money you put in it. So if we're in part retro, we can expect a check coming back to us from that, from AWC. The last thing on AWC is this, this year, we're budgeting a normal year. And what I mean by that, we're saying that we want to have all of our conferences, you know, we're going to have the annual conference, all that stuff. So we're budgeting for all that, although we don't think that we may use, have all the money. So we want to make sure the money is available, but if we don't use it, then we're going to have some savings as well. Oh, I didn't tell, there's one more thing I want to say about AWC, and that is the executive board, because of our, the monies that we have in our capital dollars, we decided to, we're going to end up paying off our property, the building that we own down there, early, two years early. So that'll save us a lot of money, and it'll save the membership a lot of money by us writing that really big check and just saying, hey, now we own the property and we're done. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keel. That was definitely an extensive report. Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, do you have a report out at this time?
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, Councilmember Keel's report tired me, so I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCloskey, do you have a report out at this time?
Well, I'm tired too. I think it's just that time in the evening. But I do have a report out on the Zeta, the Zoo Truck Authority met and approved their, the sales tax portion of their budget. As we know, the zoo was closed for three months. They made animals their priority, and also a creative enhancement to the consumer or the customer experience. And they also unfortunately had to do a lot of staff furloughs at that time. They haven't really hired a lot of their staff back. They're going lean. So there, we get about 115, 300 million in sales tax. Zoo Truck is at one-tenth of a, of the, one-tenth of a 1% of the 10.1% sales tax revenue that comes in. So that equates to, you know, a 18 million to the zoo and truck. So they have that to work with, and fortunately, they saw a slight uptick in those numbers during COVID. Go figure, right? So that was welcome news, and in the end, their stats and figures, they fared pretty well in consideration of all the hardships that they had to go through, especially with the closure and some of the weather-related items of the past year. So going forward, they learned a lot about the COVID, and they're going to continue their, a lot of their virtual programming in both the zoo and the truck for educational purposes, and also for the customer enhancements by going on their websites. At the zoo, they got a huge rave review for their virtual creatures of the night for Halloween. And for the holidays, they'll do the festive coats for the goats. So look forward to that. And zoo lights, of course, will be, all the indoors will be closed, and it'll be timed ticketed from November 27th through January 3rd. So if you're interested, go online and get your time ticketed. So they'll be open, and the truck, they got rave reviews for their wild drives, where they did individual car caravans throughout that, so they'll be continuing that. And then trams are back with their limited capacity. They're getting new trams next year. They're also... They're also breaking ground on a new tram station. And so, so that should happen. So those, that tour station is going out to bid. The Wolverines got a new habitat. They increased their space to a big half an acre. And they are so excited that the Wolverines are now climbing trees where they didn't beforehand. So they thought they were, that was their thank you to the staff for increasing their habitat. And their focus for 2021 is racial equity and accessibility and inclusion. Health and wellness equity as well, engagement, as well as the changing demands of the, the community. So that will be their focus in 2021. And that concludes my report on the ZTA.
Thank you, Councilmember McCloskey. Councilmember Fleming, do you have any comments or report outs at this time?
You know, first I, I want to say that I did go to the zoo with my grandkids and they loved it. So that was a great outing. But I'll tell you, between Councilmember McCloskey and Councilmember Keel's reports, I thought they used up all the time we had. But, but be that as it may, I thought they were both excellent reports, so thank you both for that. But I have no other comments tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, any report outs at this time?
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, no, actually. And I, but I was glad to hear about all of the other activity. That's great. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm with you. I have no report outs either. Thank you to Councilmember Keel and McCloskey for, for making it an entertaining report out section here. So with that, we are done with our council consideration items. We're moving on to our study session. Our next item is our advisory commissions doing their 21, 2021 work plans and reporting out what they intend to do. I want to, before I call up each of our commission, co, commission chairs to, to submit their proposed 21 work plan. I want to thank the commissions for hanging in here this last year. I realized that due to COVID, a lot of their meetings were put on hold and, and the agendas and work plans that they had for this 2020 year was, were not able to be accomplished. And I want to thank, thank them for, for making every effort to, to try and get together. And those that have been able to meet virtually have done so successfully and moved things forward. So our first commission is our Economic Development Advisory Commission. And we have Ron Kent on the, online. I will ask him to undarken his camera and come on board and give us an update, a brief update on what the plans are for the Economic Development Commission for the year moving, moving ahead. Mr. Kent?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ron Kent, Chair of the Economic Development Commission. And on behalf of the EDC, we thank you for this time. To recap, some of the significant contributions of the EDC, and despite the challenges, we managed to meet six times in 2021, or 2020. We participated in the rollout of the CARES Act relief package and thanked the council for allowing us to contribute. We also should note that the business community thanks you as well. On recommendation of the, of the Planning Commission, we reviewed the proposal for changing to a form-based code and sent our letter to the council in support of this change. For work plan for 2021, we plan to continue the initiatives of 2020. And in addition, we added the following to 2021. We appointed Rick Larson from the EDC to provide input in the development of the city's housing action plan. We plan to review and provide input on the proposed economic development tool and incentives as related to the sub-area plan implementations. And finally, we plan to participate with the Planning Commission in its development of the sub-area district plan for the northeastern business district. This concludes the EDC 2021 work plan report. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Kent. I appreciate the update. And again, thank you for the efforts that you put forward in assisting staff with a, with the CARES Funding Act and providing your, your expertise in, in leading in that direction. So thank you very much. And, and again, thank you for your presentation on your work plan. Again, council, these work plans will be forwarded to us for our consideration at a future meeting so that we are aware of what's, what's happening. I'm going to go through all the work plans. If we have any questions of any of our commission members, we can ask them at the end, end of that. Our Parks Advisory Commission, Chair Jack Machalo is not here. But the staff person overseeing that commission, Gary Cooper, is here to provide an update on what the Park Advisory Commission is doing. Mr. Cooper?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. As the mayor pointed out, I'm pinch hitting for the, the co-chair, who was pinch hitting for the open chair position. So his military requirements pulled him out at the last minute. So he did not, he's not able to be here tonight. So what I'm sharing on the screen here, I hope you can see it, is the 2020 plan. They met last Thursday and the discussion was to just remove the PROS plan, portion of the 2020, which was completed. And basically go with last year's plan with minor change. Review the consultant white paper on park restrooms. And also review the Homestead Park GGLO design options for cohesion with the future town center development. Other than that, their work plan is consistent with what was last year. This group, just after the PROS plan was completed, and you all know what a workload that was, was when we got shut down for the, the COVID. So with that, they weren't able to complete much else off that work plan. So I also would like to remind council that we are short three members on the Park Commission. And I haven't checked with the city clerk. I know today was the first round cutoff, so I don't.
No applications received.
Okay, so we are down at least three, possibly four off the Parks Commission. So anyone listening out there tonight that has an interest in parks within the city of University Place, I would sure welcome hearing from you and the city clerk would welcome hearing from you and help us keep the parks moving in a positive direction. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'll close my pinch hitting for the night.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Our next commission is our Planning Commission. I will ask the Chair Cliff Quisenberry to come forward. This is one of the few commissions that has been active even during COVID. I think shortly after the city council started with the teams meeting, our Planning Commission began meeting also due to statutory requirements and, and plans that had to be reviewed. So Mr. Quisenberry, can you give us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, everyone in the, on the city council, appreciate having this opportunity. As Madam Mayor mentioned, we were able to fully execute our plan for 2020. Of course, the major lift for us was the form-based code, which the recommendations have been put in front of the city council. That actually ends our meetings probably for the year unless you call any special meetings. And so for 2021, you should have in front of you the Planning Commission work plan, should be entitled 2021. And kind of the major thing we're going to be working on is the northeast business district plan. And I apologize if we see northwest on the plan itself. That is going to be the major, but we're going to start off with the small cell telecom amendments. That's to incorporate requirements under the 5G rollout that's being done and to, to modify the code, et cetera, to be able to incorporate that. We'll, you know, finalize the, or receive the recommendation for the housing action plan. And then the Planning Commission will meet on that and make a recommendation to the city council. Again, that will be followed by in the second and third quarters with the northeast business district plan. And that's an important part of us to be able to kind of further massage what we've seen out of the form-based code. As, as many of you had pointed out, there are some things that require a little bit more detail and that can be handled in that district plan. And then the final thing will be kind of code review, and that'll be at the end of the year. And that is to basically to clarify propositions that are needed to administer the form-based code.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quisenberry. Our final, our final commission is our Public Safety Advisory Commission. And we have the Chair, Mr. Edward Wood on the line. Mr. Wood, the stage is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm assuming you can hear me at this point.
Yep.
My name is Edward Wood. I am the Chair of your Public Safety Advisory Commission. And our commission has been active since July, when we finally were able to get back on, to meeting. So we first, we had, of course, our COVID hiatus. We had, during this time, we also reviewed the emergency management code for the, in partnership with the city attorney. We did, we had a great discussion with Mayor Pro Tem Worthington on the city vision for, for 2045 and the Imagine campaign. We also participated this last month, most of us, with the Public Safety Academy, which for, I know some of you are on that. I thought it was outstanding. They covered a lot of really good ground. And it was, it was very educational. My understanding is that Academy will be visible online at some point in the future. And so for those who couldn't actually attend during that time, you can view what was presented. And then, of course, we talked about our 2021 work plan. The work plan overall concept, I'll just hit on the high points right now. The details are in the plan that is, will be before you or is before you. First, we want to do, and I'm going to look off to the side, I apologize because I have to read off my part, my screen next to me. Our Imagine 2045 campaign support, specifically in working with your campaign to develop a public safety vision that partners with the 2045 campaign as well. We would like to take a look at traffic safety, specifically before COVID hit. And I was able to go out and talk to a lot of people in the prior year. One of the things that came up quite a bit was concerns about sidewalks, about speed in certain neighborhoods and basic things like signage. What we'd like to do is first work with city engineers to see what is on the docket. I know they have a plan, much of it's posted online. But to see what is being planned going forward and then to find a way to get feedback from the public on other things that may not have made the, made that list. And then provide a prioritized list of ideas, for lack of a better term, to city staff for them to consider in future planning. Also would like to look at social services support to law enforcement. This is specifically dealing with the, as mentioned earlier in this meeting, the social service issues such as homelessness, drug addiction, things like that. This year will be primarily an educational year for us. We're just going to learn what's available and what's out there. We have no specific proposal at this time or ideas that we present forward. We also would like to work with Parks Commission on park safety. One of the feedbacks, feedback we have gotten from some citizens is they don't necessarily feel comfortable or safe in our parks, depending on when and where they're at. And we'd like to find a way that we could perhaps open up those places or do something that would help citizens enjoy the park space we have better. And then finally, we were going to, or would like to participate in the public education efforts of both law enforcement and fire as they have them this year. I know the intent is to have continued law enforcement forums after the first of the year. We would like to participate in that process and support them as they do so. The plan has more specific details about what we do, how we would do it. We'd start obviously with education, development of an action item if appropriate. And then as required, a formal proposal of set actions to city staff or council. And the, I believe that concludes my part of the briefing pending your questions. Oh, there's one thing I would like to point out. While we did have a meeting last week to vote on this proposal as a commission, we are unfortunately one short of a quorum so that we could not hold the meeting. So while this has been discussed by every member of the commission, it has not been formally voted on yet. If that is something that is a priority before you are willing to undertake a vote, please let us know and we can try and hold a special meeting sometime before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Again, I want to thank all our commissions for coming on board this evening and giving us updates. I know normally it has been our policy to have a dinner and discuss each of your policies and objectives and kind of delve more into these details. And unfortunately, in the age of COVID, that was not, we were not able to do that. And thank you publicly for, for your volunteer efforts in, in assisting us as council. So I appreciate the work that you continue to do under these new circumstances and, and moving forward. I will ask if there are any comments or questions from any of our council members. And, and hopefully we will be briefed so we can move it forward with our, with our agenda. So Councilmember Keel, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mayor. And I, I appreciate your, your warning, directed to me being briefed this time. I just want to thank all of the commissioners for their work. I mean, you, even in COVID, I can see it, I was taking very copious notes here of all the things that you're involved in. And it's been a lot. And I certainly, as one council member, I'm sure my colleagues, really, really, I mean, we're not blowing, I'm not blowing smoke here. I really appreciate your, your volunteerism and the work that you've done. And, and I'll just share this and be quiet. I, I am so excited about the horizon that I see our city is on. I mean, we, we have, again, you know, I mean, those that know me, I don't, I'm not a Pollyanna person or makeup stuff. I really believe that we are on a great platform to really knock it out of the park again around all the things that you guys are working on. I mean, in, in, in the northeast corner of our city, in our town center, in, in, in all of the places that we have been talking about for years. I think that we, we now have the right mix and, and the right amount of people and the right focus and the right staff doing the right things and the right volunteers to really pull all of the stuff that we were talking about, we're really going to pull off. I mean, form-based code is going to help us, Larson Lane is going to help us, all the other things that, that we are talking about that we can't talk about right now. All that stuff is, is going to help us going forward. And I'm, and I'm just really excited about it. And I'm thankful that you guys are here helping us. And I'm just looking forward to continue doing the work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, did you have any questions or comments at this time?
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, yes, I have a few comments and I really mean it too. It'd be few. But I want to thank the commissions for their volunteer work. It's a sacrifice. They spend their own time trying to make, keep our city with the quality of life that it, that it enjoys. I, I was, I thought it was great that the Economic Development Board, our commission, and was working with the Planning Commission as a team on projects, which I think is, is wonderful. I saw some items on the Park Commission planning, plan that I think will probably generate some conversation at the, at the council level, but that's good. And finally, the Public Safety Commission plan, regardless of whether or not it was a quorum, I'm sure that it was well thought out and that, you know, a plan is only just a work in progress. I, it could be changed anytime and updated, so I'm comfortable with it. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember McCloskey?
All right. Thank you. I too would like to give my heartfelt thank you and gratitude to all of our commissions and our commission members who give up their free time to come and help the city progress forward. Your great help to all of our decisions that we make at the council level. You guys do sometimes the heavy lifting and we get to just review and ask questions and get a little more informed. And so we appreciate all your citizen inputs and your expertise that you bring to your commissions from your professional background, as well as your wisdom of life and how you would like to see our city transform in the future. So that insight is, is really strategic and valued by every member of the city council. So thank you for that. On the Economic Development Commission, I would, you know, in lieu that we don't, we probably will not have any face-to-face events coming up in the, the next three months, four months, five months, who knows? So think about a creative approach to maybe a virtual way to communicate with, with our business community to keep a, you know, a spirit of core going on and, you know, some sort of connectivity with, with them. You know, just a thought. For our Planning Commission, as usual, a very robust, robust plan that, you know, you always get to roll up your sleeves and, and work really hard each and every year. And you do an amazing and awesome amount of work year in and year out. And I'm sure the council will put more on your plate as we move along. So be prepared. The Public Safety Commission, I really love your ideas that have been vetted out with the traffic safety component, the social service aspect and support. Kudos to putting that on. I appreciate that because one of my focuses has always been homelessness. So I'll be anxiously awaiting to hear some of your outcomes that that you will bring up to to the council level for for that review. And also park safety, because we all know if our parks aren't safe, our citizens are not going to use it. So that's very strategic. You know, we're putting millions of dollars in our parks. We do want our citizens to use it and feel safe so they can enjoy the what I consider the jewels of our city that makes our our life. You know, when we have a harried lifestyle, we go to our parks for some respite and some restorative qualities. So we need to ensure that our citizens continually have safe access and full enjoyment of our parks. And to the Parks Advisory Commission, I didn't get a chance to preview their work plan because it wasn't in the packet, but I'm glad I saw that they had made it to the council this evening. I'm very ecstatic about that, as you can imagine. And I didn't note that our parks code or rules were included in the work plan because that was something that we were waiting for. We waited waiting for the pros plan to get vetted and then we were going on to our parks code because I have a legislative proposal out there for, you know, the vaping, smoking and the drones. And so I maybe Mr. Cooper can can let me know that it is on the work plan. I just happened to see it in the itty bitty line items. That was on my itty bitty screens that I was trying to look through for the for the park commission work plan.
It is there.
All right, cool.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that is my remark.
Thank you, Councilmember Fleming.
Councilmember McCloskey is always a tough act to follow. But, you know, I, I too just want to say thank you to our our various commission chairs and members of the commissions that really have, through their selfless service, helped shape the vision, direction and the goals of our city. To the earlier comment that, you know, most people don't really appreciate the time that these individuals spend on on the work that they do to really make sure that when the council's making decisions that they really are based on the best information we have at the time. You know, the thing I find most interesting is this city was founded and built on volunteerism. And it really is the backbone of our government that we in our form of government that we have. And so to the work that all our commissions do, thank you. You know, the only comment I want to make is really directed at the Parks Advisory Commission. And I did have, like many of the other council members, had the opportunity to read the letter that was written to us by the former chair. And I won't go into the details of that letter. I'll respond to to the former chair separately. But the one thing that stood out was the comment about having a schedule that was so full that the commission didn't really have an opportunity to really dig into that. And what I would offer up going into 2021, Gary, I know you represent the staff and the commission tonight, but when you all sit down to work through that, you know, come up with a realistic plan that is more engaging and more collaborative of that commission so they feel more a part of the process going forward. I think the the plans that have been laid out are really good and they're strong. But I really like to see the members of the commissions to feel a part of that process. And I know COVID played a very big part in that. So I'm not going to make excuses for it, but that that just resonated with me as I read through that that particular correspondence. You know, to the staff behind the scenes, again, also thank you for the work that you all do to support those commissions. That's a lot of extra time above and beyond what's expected as a member of the staff for the city. So thank you. Thank you all. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, just a couple of brief things. And primarily, it's to to thank our volunteers, the commission members, the commission chairs, and for the good work that you're doing there. I do appreciate that. And you're moving us forward, bringing in some new ideas, refreshing some other ones and testing them. And the interplay that we have now unfolding between the different commissions where ED Economic Development Commission and the Planning Commission have some shared members moving back and forth is is a great example. I know there's a lot of hard work going through there. And as Councilmember Keel was saying earlier, it's one of the reasons why we see when we get this sense of moving forward in some significant ways, it's because of the commission work that you folks have done and seeing that it's all intertwined nicely together. So I do appreciate that and look forward to seeing your your efforts this time as they come about over the course of this next year. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. And yes, thank you again to the to the chairs. Your work plans will be under a future item for either discussion and or consideration. So you will be hearing from the council here before year end, I'm sure. So with that, I would like to thank you for your attendance this evening again and sitting through our meeting. And I look forward to an opportunity, hopefully in 2021, where we can get together again in person and really get to know each other and get to know the work plans and and priorities and so forth. So council will be meeting virtually, I'm sure, the first part of this year to go over our priorities. So expect potentially some new ideas and new initiatives coming down to you, depending on on how we as council prioritize our workload and how we seek out your wise input. So thank you for that. I wish you all a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And then, and again, thank you for your work this past year. Our next item is our purchasing policy. We have twenty about 20 minutes before we're scheduled to move into exec session. So I'm going to ask Leslie Blaisdell and Matt Kaser to come forward to present for study the purchasing policy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Leslie Blaisdell, Finance Director again. The update to the purchasing policy was prompted by a council request to include language to related to local preference within our policies. When council made that request, finance staff was already working on revamping the format of the purchasing policy to make it more online friendly. So this council request just had us move that up in our work plan. Right now, staff typically with new technology views and uses policy documents online rather than in printed form. And our prior document was based on printing it out and keeping it in a binder on your desk. And it has had very little change since it was created when the city incorporated. Our initial project focused on a change to the formatting and look of the document to make it more online friendly and easier for staff to understand and find what they're looking for. We added a sidebar that includes frequently asked questions and tips. We included definitions and related RCWs within the various sections of the policy rather than the way it was handled in the old policy, which there was a page at the beginning of all of the definitions and all of the RCWs and nothing really tied together. And in this new document, we have embedded links within the document to any sources, any outside sources referenced so that when the policy refers to our municipal code or an RCW or an outside document, like the bidding book that is available on MRSC's website, staff can click on that link from within the document and do more detailed and thorough review. The basic policies are unchanged from our current policy document. They're simply in a different order and formatted to make it more easy to read and follow. So in the document that was in your packet tonight, the changes that are included are the addition of the Sustainable Purchasing Section 1.7, and that addresses local preference, environmental factors, and social equity factors. We updated the limits for public work, single craft and multi-craft projects in Section 2.4 to match the recent updates to the state RCW, which is what we follow related to those two types of purchases. And in Section 1.10, the city council approval, we added some language specifically that nothing in this policy is intended to preclude the city manager from referring to the city council for its approval matters which, in the manager's discretion, are appropriately approved by the council. And the council may likewise, with reasonable advance notice and prior to approval by the manager, identify certain matters which are otherwise within the manager's authority to approve itself. Changes that we wanted to bring to you that we did not yet include in the document are adjustments to our solicitation limits. Again, they have not been changed in many, many years. When we researched other municipalities from Lakewood to Puyallup to Bothell to Paulsbow and Linwood, we found that it varies greatly. There is no apples to apples comparison. Each entity structures it differently. For instance, the range of when purchases go to city council for approval varied from $50,000 to $250,000. We were unable to find a statutory based limitation on this authority. Basically, the policy we set is the policy that we are required to follow. After evaluating the other municipalities and talking to city staff, we are recommending changes to those limits. We feel that the limits continue to ensure that the city is getting quotes and safeguarding the monies entrusted to us by our citizens while allowing staff to continue to perform services efficiently. Those change currently, there is no competitive requirement, meaning we don't have to get bids. We always encourage staff to get bids when time allows. But currently, you don't have to get any bids for anything under $2,499. That adds up pretty quickly. We get to $2,499 pretty quickly nowadays. So we are requesting, we are recommending an increase to $4,999. Then three informal quotes would be required for anything between $5,000 and $14,999. Three written quotes would be required from $15,000 to $49,999. And a formal bid process and council approval would be required at anything $50,000 and greater. If council were to approve of these adjustments, we would update the document with all those number changes when we bring it back for council approval. In addition to the policy itself, there will need to be conforming changes to the municipal code. And Matt Kaser has provided a draft ordinance in the packet related to that. So that concludes my report and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Again, as a reminder, we are 15 minutes away from our exec session. So I am assuming since this was brought forward by Councilmember Figueroa as one of the proponents for some of the changes to the purchasing policy, that we will more than likely have another study session on this to allow input. So I am going to go through the order to allow council questions on this as part of the study session. So Councilmember Keel, do you have any questions in regards to the proposed policy?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Keel. I would go through them, but if since we're going to have it again for Councilmember Figueroa, I, you know, I, there's no need for me to to discuss it now. I was the second signature on this, just so the council knows. And but I'll wait for more of those conversations when he's on.
All right. Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, do you have any questions or comments that staff might be able to either answer or begin to do work for the next study session on?
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey.
Hey, Councilmember McCloskey, just has a couple of questions and that can wait to be answered in our next study session on this item, but I just want to put it out there so staff can be prepared. One of the questions I had was refers to the social equity and local preference. How is this going to be valued on an application for goods and services? Is this going to be based on a point system or what? So you can come back and answer that in the in our next study session. The second question is that I had was, when has there been an exception to the competitive process? And so those are my only two questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Fleming, you had a question?
I did, Madam Mayor, and I'll be brief. Leslie, in your presentation did, and I may have missed it, so I apologize, but did you have a comment about the spending authority for the city manager?
Currently, the city manager approves anything 14, $15,000 and above. And when it goes to when it hits 30,000, that's when it goes to council in the current policy.
So, you know, quickly, from a very historical perspective, since this will come back for a study session again, these these lower amounts were originally adopted by the council because they were really counting pennies and nickels when we first formed the city. And, you know, not and I don't want anyone to misconstrue that when I say $2,400 is not a lot of money. It's a lot of money. But back then, it was a you could have said $200,000 and had the same effect. So the the amounts that you mentioned are exceptionally low for what a city would be facing. You know, with as far as the city manager's authority goes, he actually, at one point, had a higher authority spending limit. The council had elected to decrease that because at the time, the council was at odds with the city manager, not our present one. So I'll make that clear. And so they were trying to restrict the spending authority and that was an action that was taken. It was not the correct action. Then it would not be a correct action today. And I think the recommendations that the staff has brought forward truly are sound recommendations for where a city of 33,000, 35,000 really should be operating from. So just to plant that food for thought for everyone, I'm sure we'll have more conversation later.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Blyce. So I'll make this brief. But Leslie, next time, if you could help us understand, give us some examples, one or two, of what the informal bid process is like, how that is used. And I think that's a good place to start. I also, there's a couple of other questions I have, one of which is, when we say the proposal is at $4,999, is that per bid or is that per vendor, per year? So to get some clarity about that. And so those are some things we can talk about. In my own professional experience, I've had more problems with people fussing over the small stuff than ever on the big stuff. And it is the small, the small petty larceny piece of this that seems to get people, for whatever reason, engaged. So we can talk sometime about that. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad to see we're finally raising the rates and the limits. I think it's about high time that we did that. And I think it making it online and making it accessible to to employees and being able to do their research and and ensure they crossed all their Ts and dotted all their Is is an excellent way for for the policy to to be proceeding. I reviewed it and I did not have any comments or concerns at this time. I'm just glad to see that the limits are being raised. So thank you very much. I think we will be holding a second study session because I know that the other proponent should be given the same opportunity to study. If, in the meantime, any of the council members come up with additional comments or questions, I would highly encourage you to to provide that to Ms. Blaisdell and to Mr. Kaser so that at the next study session, the council report can include those comments and those questions, excuse me, in that. So we can make a robust, have a robust study session and be able to forward it on for, excuse me, for consideration as we move forward. Because this has been a long time coming and I think we need to get it off our plates in the first part of the year. So. All right. With that, our next item is our executive session. We're about 10. Congratulations about 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 20 minutes ahead or 10 minutes ahead of when we said we were going to. ahead, or 10 minutes ahead of when we said we were going to go into exec session. So at this time, at this time of the agenda, the city council will recess to exec session for approximately one hour per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 1G to review the performance of a public employee. Any action in this issue will only be taken during council open session. The city, city council will adjourn following the exec session without taking any further action. So at this time, all council members are requested to leave this meeting and go into your, your executives, executive session team meeting and meet up there so we can do our work. We have one hour in which to do the, the work that we are scheduled to do. So I will see you immediately following this in the exec session. So at this time, we are in exec session. The executive session has been extended for a half hour. We are not making any decisions at this time, but will be in our session for an additional Council, executive session has been extended for another 15 minutes until 10 o'clock. We have exited the executive session. Council has made no, no decisions or voted, voted on anything. We will adjourn our meeting this evening. Thank you.